Okay, I'm going to call to order the Planning and Zoning Special Meeting of February 28, 2018. First on our item of, or on our agenda is the roll call.
Commissioner Height.
President.
Commissioner Teta.
President.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Shernick.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Flague.
Here.
Commissioner Tetsloff.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
All right, next is Communications from our Planning Manager, Don Burchett.
Sorry, I was a little late. We have not, thank you.
This is a public meeting. We do not have any projects that are public hearing items, but we do have other business, which is a discussion about land development code updates. So we have a public invited-to-be-heard session coming up right now, and then one after our discussion. And we apparently have someone signed up, and we have some members in the audience. So we would love to hear about anything that's not on the agenda, and because we don't have a project, we could also hear about the land development code update. And I'd be open to hearing from you again after the discussion occurs as well. So Mr. Bob McLoughlin, if you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and five minutes, I'll cut you off at the red light.
How about now? Okay. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Staff, good evening. My name is Bob McLoughlin. I live at 620 Emery Street, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the historic East Side neighborhood. Tonight, I'd like to share our strong belief that adding the Conservation Overlay District to the updated land development code is necessary for our neighborhood. The East Side includes the largest collection of houses from the early days of the Chicago, Colorado colony. It includes one national landmark, 38 designated local landmarks, and a district that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's worth protecting. About 35 years ago, the RLE Zone was created to protect the historic character of the neighborhood. I think documents have been passed around with excerpts from the present land development code. So Document 1 is taken from the present land development code, and it set the guidelines for development in the RLE Zone. It has been very successful. The percentage of owner-occupied homes has increased. Homeowners have made significant investments in updating and preserving their houses, and it's become an area of stability. Residents value being members of a strong community centered around the collective architecture of these houses. People don't flip homes in the East Side, they stay. My wife and I have lived in our house for almost 39 years. When our neighborhood is added to the new RSF Zone, we will no longer be unique, and we will lose the guidance and protection that is offered by Document 1. The proposed code has only general guidance that new development should be compatible with surrounding properties. That's not enough. We are a diverse community with many smaller houses. This makes us more vulnerable to scrape-offs and inappropriate development. Property owners must be allowed to update their homes to fit their needs, but we want additions and alterations to contribute to our neighborhood and not to detract from its historical legacy. Under the development review process that you will discuss tonight, it appears that most future developments in the East Side could be approved administratively. Our neighbors have appreciated the chance to comment on proposed development in the past. We want to have the opportunity to review significant development applications in the future as well. But regardless of whether future developments are approved administratively or have a public hearing, we all need the structure that is provided by criteria such as those in Document 1. Owners wishing to add to their properties need specific guidelines. Neighbors want the security that their family's investments will not be diminished, and administrators will benefit from criteria that can be cited in their decisions. That need, that needed structure exists today, and it's in the present code. It's the Conservation Overlay District. Document 2, which I hope you all have now, shows the present language. You can see the strong similarity between Documents 1 and 2. Clarion suggested that the Conservation Overlay District should be deleted during the code update because it's never been implied in Longmont. The RLE Zone provided the protection of Document 1, so it wasn't necessary for us. But in the future, it will be essential. If the Conservation Overlay District is carried forward, it can be tailored to fit both the city processes and our neighborhood needs. But the CO District would be useful in other neighborhoods as well. It could be an important tool for the West Side and for downtown. Consider the Conservation Overlay District as one tool in the toolbox, one that allows sensitive development to coexist with historic preservation. We ask that you carry this Conservation Overlay District forward into the updated land development code. Thank you for your time and for your efforts to create this framework for a stronger community in the future. Having served on PMZ for nine years myself, I understand the commitment and the sacrifice that each of you makes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McLoughlin. Appreciate your comments. Would your wife like to come forward and make her own comments?
I'll say.
Okay, all right. So there's nobody left in the, in the public left to come forward. So we will close the public invited-to-be-heard. By the way, I want to make note that we do have the Longmont Observer here tonight, live streaming, so welcome, welcome to the press. Thank you very much for being here. Next on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. January 17 meeting minutes, any discussion? Commissioner Goldberg.
Well, move to approve the January 17 minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the January 17 minutes. Commissioner Pollan.
I, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Pollan. We're still learning our microphones. All those who were present at that meeting and in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so that passes unanimously. January 24, 2018, meeting minutes. Any discussion? Commissioner Pollan.
I move approval of the January 24, 2018 minutes.
Okay, motion to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Goldberg. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Abstain? Commissioner Height abstains. All right, so that is passed. Okay, we move on to item number six, our land development code update discussion with Principal Planner Brian Schumacher and Principal Planner Erin Fosdick.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Schumacher with Planning Staff. So my presentation's going to be fairly brief. Just wanted to hit a few highlights and then open it up for Commission input. As noted in the communication, we do not have any specific policy-related topics that were asking for input, but we certainly appreciate any questions, suggestions that the Commission might have regarding the draft in front of you. As noted, this is also kind of the last draft that we have for you to take a look at before we bring back a consolidated draft for review. And so this includes six different chapters. And we'll say that some of those chapters have limited changes. I know some of you were on the Commission a few years ago when the Development Procedures chapter was brought forward for review and consideration in 2015. As noted in the communication, there are some modifications, but it's fairly limited in terms of that particular chapter. One thing that is new, however, is the Historic Preservation Chapter. And this was based on some feedback that we received from the Historic Preservation Commissions as well as input from the public that, and then also our Code Consultant, that they felt that right now the Historic Preservation Chapter is kind of tucked away in Title II of the municipal code. It's in the Administration section. Typically, in that section, for most of the other boards and commissions that are identified in Title II, that lays out kind of the composition and roles and duties associated with the particular board, but more of the details regarding procedures and criteria associated with that particular, those other boards are laid out in other areas of the code. And so similar to Plan and Zoning Commission, which most of the procedures are laid out in 1502 or Development Procedures, the Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, felt that it important, would be important to integrate the review criteria and procedures associated with historic preservation to the land development code. It provides more visibility for historic preservation and then also kind of integrates into that development review process. So we've had several discussions with the Commission about the draft, and they have provided some suggestions and recommendations. And the current draft that's in your packet is based upon those prior discussions that we've had with the Commission. I will note that one topic in particular, I know while we were discussing kind of early on regarding, provided the Commission with an overview regarding the zoning districts update, the use regulations, and the zoning map, some questions came up regarding nonconformities. So the nonconformities section is in here, but I know the Commission has asked, expressed interest regarding whether or not there'd be a number of nonconformities created with this code update. And so as part of that, just wanted to mention a few things. We feel that with the expansion, and particularly with the number of mixed-use districts that are being created with this update, that will allow more flexibility in terms of the types, number of uses in those particular districts, that we think that the number of potential nonconforming uses should be limited with this, with this code update. There are a couple of instances, however, where zoning, where zoning is proposed to be consistent with the envisioned plan and land use categories, that there will be some nonconforming uses created. One example is with the change of zoning, proposed change of zoning in the Historic East Side neighborhood, which is currently zoned RLE, which over time, there have been some attached housing developed in that neighborhood. But with the proposed change from RLE zoning to residential, single-family, the attached housing would be considered nonconforming uses in that residential neighborhood. It's not to say that those uses couldn't continue, they just would not be able to And then in terms of nonconforming structures and dimensional standards, again, when we talked about the zoning districts, that laid out the dimensional standards. And as part of the update, again, expansion of the mixed-use districts, and then allowing more flexibility for some of the residential districts in terms of trying to create a more pedestrian-friendly design, or bringing structures closer to the public sidewalk, allowing encroachment of front porches, perhaps into that setback, that we feel with reduced dimensional standards that actually the number of existing and potential nonconforming structures will likely be reduced with this code update. There are an exception to that, however, in a couple of instances, and we talked about this before with the zoning district chapter with the use of build-to lines in certain areas of the mixed-use districts, where you have a requirement where a building has to be built to a certain point. And again, the purpose of that is to bring buildings closer to the streets, public sidewalk, create a more pedestrian-friendly type of development that's more pedestrian-oriented and walkable in our community. In those instances, we think that's going to be fairly limited, but there will be some circumstances where that'll occur. Again, the existing legal nonconforming buildings can remain in place, but any replacement buildings would need to conform with the new standards. So aside from that, I'm not going to go through each of the bullet points and the various chapters that are highlighting the substantive, more substantive changes. Certainly, if you have questions about that, I'm happy to respond to those questions. Just wanted to also mention kind of the next steps after the discussion this evening. Is that next Monday at the council meeting, we will be discussing these chapters with City Council to get their input as well. And then after that, we'll be taking all of the chapters that we've discussed to date and consolidating those into one draft for review. We anticipate having a public review draft of the consolidated code in early April and putting it out for public review. We're also looking at hosting kind of a public forum, open house, kind of the second week of April, to allow the public to come in and ask questions or discuss potential changes with the code update. And then in terms of the Commission's review of the consolidated draft, we're looking at April 25 as the planned date for a public hearing on the consolidated draft. And then after that, it would be forwarded on with the Commission's recommendation to City Council in May. So that's my brief remarks.
So I'm going to suggest, and Brian, tell me if you agree with this, that, because you provided us with three documents, which you so nicely numbered, one, two, and three. So maybe just to kind of structure our discussion, we could go document by document, just so that we're not bouncing from one to the other. And I would suggest we do them in numerical order. So the first document, you titled it Development Procedures, something or other, and it is, says Land Development Code on the cover, working draft. So how about we start there? And I did have a question about it.
Yeah.
But on page six, Table 2.1, the summary table of review procedures.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just, I mean, is this a new table, or has this changed? Because I noticed that most planning and zoning meetings are not indicated as requiring a public hearing.
So the table is new.
Okay.
In 2001, when we did a fairly large consolidation and update to the land development code, we did have a somewhat similar table. And then when the Development Procedures were updated in 2015, that table was removed because there was some concern about it might be confusing or doesn't accurately reflect all of the procedures. So we wanted to take an attempt at perhaps resurrecting that table, if the Commission feels that would be helpful for both the Commission as well as the public. But again, your question about the notion about public hearing, you're right, you're correct, where it says, where there's an R in the column regarding Plan and Zoning Commission, that should have the brackets that would indicate a public hearing.
So, and I guess part of my concern or my question is, I mean, I'm not saying that I know what's, what's right here. I mean, maybe we've, we've always held meetings as public hearings, even though it wasn't required. I'm not, I'm not sure. But if this table is correct, and so many of our meetings, like say, annexations, do not have to be a public hearing, could an applicant insist that the meeting not be a public hearing? Is that, I mean, because that would be unfortunate in my mind, where even though it might be a matter of practice that we hold it as public, if we don't have brackets around it, could they force us into not holding a public hearing for it?
Well, I think what we'll want to do is, is update the table, assuming we keep the table, to reflect that those are required public hearings. They've always been. Anytime the Commission has been a recommending body to City Council on matters that require ordinance approval, they have required, have been required to be public hearings.
Then page 10, withdrawal of an application?
Yes.
Item four. I wish I had known about this like a meeting or two ago, where Planner Ortiz was here and, and the applicant didn't show up. It was for an extension of, of a, of a project.
Right.
And the applicant just wasn't here. Has this always been one of our, our procedures? Because if the applicant fails to attend a hearing before the decision-making body, the application's considered withdrawn? It's always been there?
Chair Shernick, I don't know about always, but I don't think that this is new. I think that this is in our code.
Right. Well, golly, you know, reading this over the weekend, I was like, gosh, I could have been much more draconian. All right. That's good to know. And Brian, I, of course, have caught some typos here and there, and I'll send those under separate cover for you.
Appreciate that.
But I can't seem to avoid catching that. Commissioner Flague.
I'm looking down on page 40. I really like the old system, I guess. Looking down at page 40, I realize that's quite a bit further on, but one of the things that caught my eye as I went and read through it was the additional review criteria for secondary uses.
Mm-hmm.
Because I continued to be very concerned about the secondary uses allowed in the new mixed-use district that changes the R2 to a mixed-use district. And so one of my concerns is that there's a little notation up there on page, oh, I lost track of where it is, ah, on page 39, applicability for site plans and limited uses. And Part A there says that all new development additions, site changes, or changes in use are subject to site plan review unless eligible for a waiver under subsections C3 below, and then C3 below just alludes to the fact that the secondary uses proposed will not substantially diminish the availability of land within the district for primary uses. Why are you allowing that to throw any kind of review out, or is that just not clear and I'm mistaking what that says?
Are you referring to the criteria 3C?
As being something that if that can be cited, then it would seem to me that, then the review of that secondary use is minimalized.
Chairman Shernick, could we ask the Commission to speak a little closer to the microphones?
Sure.
The people in the back can't hear what everybody's saying, so.
Yeah. So on page 40 there, 3C would tend to prompt the other requirements for a site review of a secondary use.
It would just be one of the criteria associated with a secondary use. I mean, I think the concern, based on discussions that we've had with the Commission and Council regarding the notion of secondary uses, is that obviously, we don't want the secondary uses, whether it's, it's multifamily and a mixed-use employment, or small-scale commercial uses in a residential mixed or residential multifamily to be the predominant use. So rather than coming up, having to track a percentage in terms of, you know, the number of square footage of a secondary use, or the land that's occupied by secondary uses, we felt that this criteria may work for review of those secondary uses.
Well, except that, and that sentence does say under site plans and limited uses reserved. Under C there, page 39, number one, applicability A, all new development additions, site changes, or changes in use are subject to site plan review unless eligible for a waiver under subsections C3 below.
Oh.
So it looks like to me, as I read it, that, for example, in R2, which is now changed to the mixed-use zone, that allows commercial development, for example, in a neighborhood, then you don't have to have a site plan review of that secondary use encroaching, that's my word, not yours, into basically an R2 neighborhood.
Right.
And as long as the secondary use as proposed will not substantially diminish, okay, what does that mean? The availability of land within the district for primary uses. So my concern is that if you can determine C from under 3C there, then there isn't to be a site plan review of a new use that could very likely, likely be a commercial use into a residential neighborhood that has never been there before, and if it's determined that the secondary use as proposed will not substantially diminish, then you don't have to have a site plan review?
So I apologize, I was confused. So when the, that section of additional review criteria for secondary uses was added as number three, that bumped the former number three, which was waiver by director, down, which, that's just a typo, that, that under C1, it should say C4 on the second line.
What should say C4?
On page 39?
We're on page 40, I believe.
Well, C1A.
C1A should say, in the second line, should, subsection should say, instead of C3, should be C4.
Should say C4 instead.
Yes.
Okay.
City Attorney Kramer?
Chair Shernick, I just wanted to bring up something in response to a previous question. Thank you, Don. And I don't have the page number pulled up because I'm looking at the current code, but under 1502030B6D, little d, public hearing, a public hearing is required for any application on which the PZ makes a final decision, but not those for which the PZ makes only a recommendation to the City Council.
Oh.
So I don't think that it hurts anything to have a public hearing and have the public comment come in the middle of the item, but not required.
Yeah, my, my personal feeling is that the more public hearing that we have on items, the better. But Commissioner Flague, has your question been answered?
No.
Okay.
So as I look at, so if you say that that should be now C4, then I have to look at, again, we're waiving site plan review for construction of additional building area or change in use, again, as it applies to introducing a commercial use under the new code that is proposed on an area that was formerly R2, which, which did not allow any commercial instruction or use, then suddenly, you're going to allow to have a commercial use based on the criteria, and I understand that you want to streamline review processes for small little things and, and not have to have a big folder all about it, but if you're going to introduce into a primarily existing residential area, a new commercial use, then I think there really ought to be a standard required site plan review and input, therefore, by the neighborhood, that suddenly now has to have that commercial use in its very midst. And then my follow-up question that I continue to be concerned about is, I don't know if you've even gotten to the mapping portion of it, or figuring out how much of the new code districts overlap with areas of stability and/or areas of change, because some of the R2 was early identified as area of stability, but if you're now changing it to a mixed-use district, then you've introduced a then you've introduced a somewhat destabilizing situation in an area where people thought we're good to go and we're safe and there's nothing going to happen. So I have real concerns with the map that I have not seen and you may not, in fact, have completed, but these are very real concerns to people that are living there.
So I will comment that in terms of secondary uses, and I don't have the zoning districts chapter in front of me, but I recall that many of, where secondary, small-scale, commercial uses were proposed as secondary uses in residential mixed or residential multifamily. I believe many of those were proposed as conditional uses as opposed to a permitted use, which would require it to go through a public hearing process. There are instances where other secondary uses, such as multifamily in a mixed-use employment district, was proposed as a permitted use, which would fall under this site plan review, administrative review process. But I, I think, um, in most instances, what I recall is that, uh, so like, for example, a small-scale restaurant or a, uh, office space or retail space, uh, that those uses as secondary uses in the residential districts would have to go through a conditional use review process, which would involve a neighborhood meeting and a public hearing before the Plan and Zoning Commission.
And Commissioner Flage, though, that is spelled out on page twenty-nine and thirty. It's actually, it starts at the top of page thirty of the draft that you have, where it talks about the additional review criteria for secondary uses under the conditional use section. So what I think we need to confirm is that the uses you have concerns with in the mixed residential area are conditional uses and are uses that could not be waived. They would be required to go through a conditional use. They'd be required to have a public hearing, and they'd have to meet these additional review criteria, and this commission will make that decision, not staff.
Well, and that's why, after having read some of that, to come down here and read some of the site, stuff on site plans, then it didn't make sense, which is why I brought up the question.
And again, if the commission has concerns with any of the uses that are identified as a, um, secondary use that you feel should not be handled by staff, then those are the changes that we want you to identify and, and let us know, because, you know, that, that, that's part of the discussion here. So, I mean, if four of you commissioners would like to recommend a change, or all of you make a, recommend a change, that's great. So, you know, that's, that's why it's important that we're going through this, because we want you to identify those now. We don't want to have them identified after we've gone through the process, that something we didn't think about. Okay? So thank you.
So retail, sorry, if I might just interject. So Erin was nice enough to share her use table with me. So in the residential mixed and residential multifamily neighborhoods, those secondary uses such as retail sales, indoor, restaurant, office use, and similar types of, commercial types of uses would be a conditional use review as opposed to a permitted use.
Okay. Any, Commissioner Flage?
Well, I just want to verify then again that under C one, it should be C four rather than C three.
Correct. Thank you. Any further discussion on, on this particular document? Commissioner Pullman?
Yes, uh, under fifteen oh-two oh-six oh, I uh, five, and we'll keep it there, the additional review criteria for variances.
Yes.
And that will be page thirty-seven. And my particular concern is with number E, a variance shall not be granted for self-imposed hardship. Because we've come across this several times, and it's hard to have somebody wanting to put something up and not have it be a self-imposed hardship. And I know we talked about this before, and that the intent of the variances was for us to have some leeway in granting variances, but by going by the strict interpretation of the wording, a variance shall not be granted for a self-imposed hardship, that would cause me to find very few occurrences where variance would have, would be allowed. And that, I think, goes against what the intent of the variance is supposed to be. And I think we had talked about this, boy, almost a year ago, and we were kind of looking for a little clarification from the city on that.
Sure, sure. Well, I know this standard has been in place, though the, the particular criteria regarding self-imposed hardship has been in place for a long time. It's been part of variance criteria by not only our community, but a lot of other communities. And so, um, you know, if the commission feels that they'd like to allow more, more flexibility in terms of granting, uh, variances, uh, without having to have that hurdle of, of the, um, not being able to grant a variance that's a self-imposed hardship, we certainly appreciate your thoughts and feedback on that.
Commissioner Teta?
So, Brian, just to help me understand that, the way I understood it, reading these documents, was self-imposed was something like if you had sold off a portion of your property and were left with a parcel that was no longer big enough. Is that accurate?
Well, I mean, it could be, I mean, there's, there's special circumstances, but then there's also, you know, if you made a request that... I'm not sure if I'm going to describe this. Can you think of an example, Don, where we've run across an issue that wasn't self-imposed in terms of a, a variance request recently?
So, uh, Brian, I, I have an example of, of an argument that was made at one of our meetings, uh, where, it was one of the new medical buildings proposed, uh, over by the highway. That, uh, it was self-imposed hardship, um, because the, uh, project was, was not taking into account that they could reduce their square footage and therefore reduce their parking required and therefore not need a variance. They were insisting on maximum parking and maximum square footage, and they weren't willing to budge on either. Is that a good example?
Yeah, that is, that is a good example.
Okay. So, so it seems to me that self-imposed hardship doesn't have any, any, uh, constraints or, or, you know, it's not qualified. It's, it's just, is it a hardship and did they bring it upon themselves?
So it is a fairly substantial hurdle to, uh, to get over in terms of a variance request.
So, City Attorney Kramer, if that sentence were changed from shall to may, would that give any flexibility, or does it matter legally?
Chair Shernick, we, we want some criteria to guide the commission's decision, and I think we either want to prohibit self-imposed hardships in the granting of variances or not. I worry about what the conversation would be like if it's just we may.
Right. Sounds like a past eleven o'clock sort of meeting. Okay. Further discussion? Oh, Commissioner Flage?
I, I would tend to like to keep shall because one of the things that can happen is that a developer will think, well, or whomever is doing whatever kind of change on a site plan, and they come in and, and they have just put it together quickly, or maybe not quickly, but they figure, oh, I'll make a good case for it and I'll, I'll get this approved. On the other hand, if the variance shall not be granted for self-imposed hardship, I think that requires of the engineers and architects to work a little better, and we get a higher quality development because they have to figure out how to make everything work on the site that they have rather than the site they envisioned. So I don't want to back off from requiring a little more effort and a little better development. I think that's important for the city long-term.
Commissioner Teslov?
Kind of agree. Um, I'm a fan of leaving the shall in there. I feel like if we were to take that out, it kind of, it feels to me like you could quickly become the Wild West. And if anybody can kind of present any variance that they feel like and say, well, you know, I already bought all the materials for this giant shed that I want in my backyard. It's going to cost me thousands of dollars to go buy more materials. I mean, I feel for you, but you should have gone through the process in the first place instead of just assuming that you could build this up there. And you do run into the occasional instances where it's not self-imposed, and then they actually do have a hardship. And so I would just be afraid if we took the shall out, what... We could start seeing variances every single meeting of people just wanting to do whatever on their property.
Commissioner Height?
I think my position on variances has been and probably always will be that it is an absolute last-ditch effort to allow somebody to, to build something that otherwise wouldn't be a developable site. And the self-imposed hardship is indeed the thing that catches all of them that are other than, there's nothing else I can do here. Which makes a variance, at least in my mind, an absolute last-ditch effort. We otherwise have this code that we are developing, planning, and allowing people to rely upon, that I think needs to control how you, how you develop in the city of Longline. And, and variance, again, last ditch if you otherwise can't develop your property. And the self-imposed hardship is exactly what we're trying to stop, um, which is gaming the system for maximum parking and maximum building density where one of them should have given, arguably. So that's my two cents.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Brian, how often does the concept of self-imposed hardship prevent, uh, a project from coming before us? You know, when, when something's being reviewed, is it a common tool to pull out, you know, in front of the applicant? Well, shoot, this is self-imposed and therefore not sending projects our way? Or is this rarely referenced?
No, we, we do, and we have pre-application meetings with applicants and discuss their proposals. And we note that certain items will require a variance review by the commission. We certainly bring that to their attention as well as the criteria threshold to potentially be granted a variance. And it, it has, you know, it has the ability to dissuade an applicant for, from considering, uh, requesting a variance, certainly. It certainly doesn't, as you are well aware, doesn't dissuade everyone from coming before the commission to request a variance. But, um, we feel, or we're hoping that with the update to our design and development standards, um, that encourage more flexibility in terms of design, particularly for mixed-use developments, that we're hoping that the commission will see fewer, fewer variance requests.
Okay. Hey, Don, in your number of years sitting in that chair, can you give me an idea of how often, uh, how frequently we and other commissions have deferred to, uh, this self-imposed hardship as a reason to deny a variance? Is it infrequent, frequent?
Commissioner Goldberg, I don't have any statistics that I could share with you. I can only share my recollections over the years from the projects that I've seen. I can say that I know that staff has recommended denial of variances that the Planning Commission has approved. And I know that I've seen a number of applications with variances that we have recommended, approved. I can't think of any recently that were denied of variances.
Yeah, me neither.
So, you know, whether it was based on the criteria that you're talking about specifically...
Sure, it's hard to know.
I can tell you that, as Brian stated, in our pre-application meetings, when we identify variances, we will point-blank tell people whether or not, at the time, we feel that it's supportable. And oftentimes, I would say, nine times out of ten, we will explain to them that on the information they provided so far, that we don't believe that we can support it. During the review process, though, after they provide all of their justification, they address the review criteria, they explain why they believe that it does meet the criteria, then we reevaluate it at that time. But to the letter of the law, to meet the rules, it is, it is difficult, and it is meant to be.
Brian, you said that many other municipalities require, uh, this condition, um, or criteria. Can you think of one that doesn't? Or is, is this like cut and paste from every single municipality? You don't really have to name one, but like, can you, do you think it exists? Do you think there's ever a location where there's not?
There may be one that exists. I can't say that I've run across one that doesn't have a criteria similar, criteria similar to this.
In all of your experience, it's pretty traditional. I think I'll just end with, um, I have found this criteria frustrating at times when we want to approve a project, and then Commissioner Height pulls this up. And it is exactly at that moment that I have to sit back in my chair and come up with a real, sound argument as to why we're going to move forward with this. That said, I believe we have done that and, and approved variances and perhaps disregarded this, this criteria. So I respect it, and it's very important, and as Brian said, this is supposed to be, this is intentionally challenging, and as Commissioner Height says, this is supposed to be a last-ditch effort. So the good commissioner in me says, well, we should be keeping this here, but the real commissioner in me says, but we have definitely worked around this before. So I just look forward to hearing from the rest of the team what you think is the right way to, how do we leave the, the literature in there? If we're willing to work around it.
Commissioner Pullman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. Um, I want to thank the commission for this discussion because, as, uh, Commissioner Goldberg said, this has been a stickler a couple of times, and, and we do come across this thing where it's, it sounds good. It sounds like it's a great project. It's maybe a little variance, and, ah, maybe we'll just kind of fudge on this one. But I do want to kind of get everybody's mind together because I think we've come across this over the last year. We've kind of really struggled with the fact that it says, you shall not grant it if it is self-imposed. And I'm okay with doing that. I just want to make sure they are all in agreement that it means what it says now. I mean, that we're, we're, you know, I, I am going to try to make a, a, a more firmer stand on really understanding what is and what is not self-imposed. So that's the reason why I brought it up, and I'm just really interested in hearing all the viewpoints of the other commissioners.
Commissioner Flage?
I recall one time that we had a senior housing building, I think, come before us for affordable housing, and we allowed them to have something on the roof. We allowed a variance in the height. But I think what it always is when you allow a variance is a balancing act. What is the benefit of what you're, they're proposing as opposed to whatever else is in place, such as thou shalt not. But the point is, is that that's why they come for a public hearing. That's why they come for a discussion, so that we can weigh what's going on, we can take testimony, we can hear the various angles of it. And that's, that's appropriate, because if you're going to make something that's not allowed generally happen, there has to be pretty good reasoning behind it, and we have to figure out if it is appropriate. But that's good to have that and not make it so easy so that we do get eventually a consensus. We get on the same page. We figure out what we want to do. We get on the same page. We figure out what we want to do and go ahead with it or not.
Commissioner Pollan.
So in the example you just gave though, basically that was a self-imposed hardship. And, and by the letter of the law, then going forward, my opinion will be to not be able to approve that because it does not meet our standards. And I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure everybody understands that going forward, that that is the standard we're setting. And, and I think over the last couple of years, we're kind of been grinding through these things and, and I think we're getting really good at kind of hashing things out and having the good discussions about it. But I just want to make sure we, you know, going forward, we're, we're all in agreement with shall not means shall not. So, or you shall not, not grant it, so.
Commissioner Height.
In the several instances that I can recall within the last year, in the several instances with, over the last year wherein I've tried to be more of a stickler on what, what a variance is and when it can be granted. There have been clever workarounds that other members of the commission have come up with to identify that there are unique aspects of a, of a certain property that the applicant had nothing to do with. So though I view variance somewhat differently, the commissioners otherwise found ways to work around what I think to be strict language that maybe is exactly the way this thing is supposed to work.
So Brian, I don't think we're giving you any guidance here on this, but it is an interesting discussion. Commissioner Goldberg has something else to say.
Only that I'm, my suggestion as a member of the commission is to leave it as, as written.
And I would, I would opt to do the same. And, you know, basically when it comes down to a vote, we know that, you know, everybody makes up their mind when they press that button. So, is there anything else in this document one which anybody would like to go over? Seeing nothing, let's move on to document two. Which is the general provisions. So 1501, 1507, 08, 09, and should be .10. That's one of the typos I'm going to be sending you. Don't everybody chime in at once. I'm, I'm, it's a long document. I'm looking for, for my own notes on it. Oh. Page 73. So non-conforming structures, Brian. Damage or destruction. So paragraph B, item two. No repairs or restoration may be made unless a building permit is obtained within 180 days, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of stories after our flood in 2013 that FEMA was extremely slow to provide funding. And so, you know, somebody who is reliant entirely on FEMA to be able to rebuild might not be able to hit that 180 days. Is that, am I on to something there? I mean, did, did we have instances of that?
I don't know for certain, but I would not doubt that, that that would have occurred, particularly with all the damage that occurred during the flooding.
So, so is that something that, that we would just administratively make an exception to given the hardship that the person is under and given the circumstances that they're waiting for FEMA to come through?
So we may be able to build in some language for unavoidable circumstances to allow foreign extensions of that time period.
Okay, just a thought there. And let's see, I have a, okay, so I have a note to myself, but I, I, I need to understand what I, what I meant. Ah, okay, I remember this one. It's still non-conforming uses. In some neighborhoods, there have been some non-conforming uses that have been there for so long that to actually force the non-conforming use to go away would be more deleterious to the neighborhood than making it conform. So the only example I can think of that I know of would be for, the West Side Tavern over on Third and Sherman, thereabouts. That's been a restaurant for so long that, but it is non-conforming. That if it fell out of its current use and had to conform and you put it back to a single family, I don't think anybody in the neighborhood would probably want that. They don't, people want a tavern there. They want a, a neighborhood restaurant. So there could be examples where, where forcing things to conform are not actually in, in the neighborhood's best interest. How would we work with a scenario like that? And it also does make me think about, you mentioned that we could be creating some non-conformities with attached housing in the historic east side. And it all, you know, I don't know what those are and I don't know how long they've been there and how they're viewed by, by that neighborhood as whether they're beneficial or not. But so, but you see my point? Non-conforming is not always an evil.
So let's use West Side Tavern as an example. So it's been there, was, was a grocery store, was different used restaurant, now it's a tavern, a restaurant tavern. And so by the code that we've had in place for, for a long time, that if that use were discontinued for a period of time, then it could not be reestablished. It would need to comply with zoning district where it is, which is currently the R1 district, which is changing to residential, single family. So it would be limited to whatever uses are allowed in residential, single family. I might have to confer with my cohorts, but if, if there is an interest on the commission to allow some flexibility there, maybe, maybe there's an appeal process associated with a use that's been discontinued for more than 180 days or whatever that timeframe is, where somebody would want to reestablish that non-conforming use. I don't know if you guys have any other thoughts, Dan or Don, about that?
Chair Sharnick, this is a tough one. Because the whole point of non-conforming uses is to phase them out. And so if there's a type of use that should be permissible under narrow circumstances in a zoning district, to me that's a commercial, I'm sorry, to me that's a conditional use. And I, I understand your question is more nuanced than that. But I, I worry about what would happen if we had a procedure to allow a non-conforming use to continue indefinitely despite a discontinuance. At that point, do we really want to be calling it a non-conforming use?
Right. So, yeah, I mean, this is kind of like, you know, the, the self-imposed hardship discussion we just had. I think there was another scenario we had over on, I believe it was Kim Barker Martin. It was a machine shop and, and she was not able to find machinists. And Don's nodding his head, you remember this one? And, and I believe that, that she fell out of use and we did not approve her maintaining that commercial use. And, but, so I, yeah, she wanted an antique store or something like that. But, so I'm wondering, just thinking aloud, like maybe the solution isn't in changing the code or having an appeal process. Maybe the solution is in somehow making people more aware or notifying them that, that the use is going to disappear. Maybe the onus is on the, the neighborhood community to rally around that use if they want it so badly. And, and, you know, but do people even know that this happens?
So I, I mean, I guess one of the questions is, is the period of time? It, it's currently 180 days. Is, is that too short a period for maybe an opportunity to reestablish a non-conforming use? 180 days has been used for a long time. So it's six months. So we've bantered about whether or not a year makes sense, but we've left it at 180 days.
Okay.
And I, sorry, go ahead, Don. Got one more thing to say regarding the, the McRoberts Building over on Martin Street. So under the proposed code changes and zoning use regulations changes, that property will change the zoning to, it's currently zoned R2, changed to residential mixed. So in that instance, a secondary use would be potential through a conditional use review.
Okay, interesting. Yeah. Don?
Brian stole my thunder, but I was just going to say that, you know, in Mrs. McRoberts' case, I think that this changes that we've talked about with the secondary uses in certain zones that would come through a public process, that that could open up opportunity for someone who has a property that currently is stuck, like Mrs. McRoberts. I would also say that as your example with the, whether it be an apartment building or a duplex or the Third Avenue Cafe kind of scenario, I would, I would kind of argue that while I think that expanding that length of time before the use would go away would probably be appropriate to consider, I think what's really going to determine whether or not that use stays or goes is going to be the market. Because if there is no one going to that Third Avenue Cafe, then I don't care how long you keep it from going away on the books. If no one's going to buy it, then someone's going to buy it to change it into something else that's allowed that they can then make money on. Okay? If I've got an apartment complex that has eight units and I put it up for sale and somebody wants to buy it because they want to own eight apartment units, they're going to buy it or I'm going to keep it and I'm going to continue to rent it anyway. So some of the uses, I don't think you're going to ever run into the, the timeframes to where the, the use is going to go away. But I do think that the ones like the Third Avenue, I think it is truly whether or not the business is supported is going to dictate whether or not it's going to stay or go in the neighborhood. And, and that, so the market's going to decide that. We've just set a date at which time we're going to finally step in and say, okay, you know what? We, we've given you a year, we've given you 180 days, whatever that number is. And it, no one's been in here. You know, it's, it's not a business anymore. So.
Thank you, Don. Commissioner Height.
I have a couple of questions and they're just general questions to staff, maybe to members of the commission. Regarding dedications, 1507, 020. There are street dedications, there's school dedications or fees in lieu and there are open space park dedications. I've noted that Longmont doesn't appear to require the construction of parks, save maybe a pocket park in a subdivision. But our, our larger regional parks are sometimes slated for a long time until the city generates enough revenue to be able to, to put them in. Though the subdivisions around that regional park crop up, crop up, crop up. Why don't we have developers build those and get assessments from other subdivisions when they come in? Why do we wait and have the city build them?
So the public parks are identified on our land use plan in Vision, in Vision Longmont. They're considered a, a public facility. Typically what's required is the, either the, a land dedication when the subdivision is planted for the park site. And then when individual permits are pulled for homes, that there is a park improvement fee that is paid for the permits that go towards the construction of those neighborhood and community parks. And, and as part of that, I think our Public Works Natural Resources staff feel that, at least my understanding, is that they prefer that it go through their process in terms of design and go, you know, go through the public forum process that they put on for designing parks. It's typically part of our capital improvement program where it's budgeted over a five-year timeframe and prioritized based upon budget availability. And so it's kind of a prioritization that we have in place. I know we've discussed in the past about whether or not it made sense for allowing developers to consider developing a neighborhood park. And one example, this is a number of years ago, that project that I was working on was the Wes Grange Development out by 75th and Nelson Road where McStain Enterprises, which was a developer at the time, was interested in upfronting the development of the neighborhood park as a marketing tool for their development. But I know that there were some concerns expressed by our Public Works and Natural Resources staff about the developer doing the construction of the park. Anything else you want to add, Don?
I'll jump in. Chair Sharnick, Commissioner Height. Different kind of answer. I think the city's philosophy in general is to require developers to pay for site-specific public improvements. But system-wide improvements are financed differently. So parks, we, as Brian said, we charge a fee on residential development and that is a way that we fund parks system-wide. If we required a developer to build a park, then we wouldn't be able to also collect that impact fee, probably. That's what's known as double dipping. So that's a different way to think about it. But in public improvements like streets, for example, will require a developer to pay for the site-specific impacts on streets. We also require a transportation impact fee for system-wide impacts. And so the way we've broken that down in parks is essentially saying that with regard to construction, it's system-wide except for, as you said, pocket parks.
Well, my concern is whether or not, sure, we don't want to double dip. At the same time philosophically, I think you could see that maybe, and I'm calling them regional parks as compared to a, a pocket park or a, parks that are identified on Invision Longmont that are city-owned or, or public parks. I would suppose that the primary users of those parks are going to be the subdivision residents that live nearest to it and therefore that park kind of benefits them. My question, my next question is, you know, whether or not, instead of double dipping, are we even getting a, a full dip? I mean, are we getting enough impact fees to cover the cost of, of these structures? Or do we view it as something that is system-wide and that all the residents of the community, the city, have to pick up some of the slack? Even though you might argue that it's primarily benefiting the, the residents who live near this thing and the subdividers and the developers that are building those residents' homes. Is the cost? Is the cost being proportionately shared by those who benefit most from it? So again, my first question is, does it pay for itself or do we go into the general fund? Do you know?
Commissioner Height, I, I don't know the, your, the answers to what you're asking, and I think that, you know, we can get that information or we can ask the people that actually know, could answer these questions for you to, to come and, and provide that information. But I, I would be, I would be guessing, you know? So I'm not gonna guess.
And my next question along those lines is, the school fees, impact fees or dedications, there's a chart in there that seems to be, well, at least in my review, somewhat dated. Does that get updated? I mean, does the St. Braine, and I don't know what other school systems we have in our community, is that annually updated? Is that continually reviewed?
Erin's coming down and I'll let her, her answer that one.
Commissioner Sharnick, Chair, Commissioner Height, Erin Fostick, Planning and Development Services Department. We have two IGAs with the school district. One of them deals with, one of them does contain the formulas that we use that are in this code. And each year, we get an annual report from the district that both details the spending of the contributions that we give them, as well as goes through the formulas, including student yields, as well as school size and such. And so they haven't requested a change in that in a number of years, but it is something that's evaluated each year. And they do very detailed planning, projections and estimates, and we're involved in, in that process with them. But this does not change frequently. It hasn't changed, I would, if I had to estimate, in at least the last decade. I wanna say 2006 may be the last time that it changed, but I could get that information for you for sure.
Well, me personally, this commission generally don't know that that's really within our ALOIC, but it seems to me that it's an issue that tangentially touches upon what we do and somebody needs to keep their eye on that cookie jar. And if the school district hasn't looked at it in, in 12 years, that's kind of interesting in another term.
I'm, I'm sorry, I miss, I'm, maybe I misspoke. We evaluate it frequently. We just haven't changed it because there hasn't been a need to change it. The yields haven't changed. So I shouldn't have implied that we're not looking at it. That's not the case.
Maybe I misunderstood as well. Thank you. Had nothing more on this.
Commissioner Teta.
Well, I know we get off-topic for a minute. I just wanna go back to the nonconforming use, 180-day disuse. I'd be in favor of some kind of an appeal process. Kinda, kinda goes to what Don was talking about with the market. I feel like if a, a property changes or becomes, goes out of use for that 180 days, say, and nobody comes in to do what we would like them to now do with that property, at some point, I think it's worth considering that we allow whatever use to be done there to be done again, rather than just have it go unused. And I, I'm thinking of a particular property, but I'd rather not talk about it. I, I don't know that much needs to be changed, except that there be a way that it could be reconsidered. It, it's great that we have a vision and we wanna change what happens in a particular area in our city, but if that isn't happening, it's, whether it's, you know, we change an area to be mixed use and no developers come in and wanna, I, I feel like the, the developers don't have a problem coming to us and saying, hey, nobody's buying this, nobody's, nobody's doing what you wanna have done, we wanna rezone it. We should be able to do that, too. That's all.
Commissioner Fleg.
My discussion was gonna be something slightly different, but in response to that, I guess I have known situations where that happened. And the owners of the property come and say, well, we can't get anybody to do what the new zoning is. And then the discussion kinda works itself around to the concept of having a self-created hardship, like they think that their piece of land is much more valuable than it actually is. Or the family doesn't actually live here anymore and they're operating through a broker and they live somewhere hundreds of miles, thousands of miles away, and somebody has told them that this is gold and it's in Boulder County and, and so you should be able to get XXX. And then that's not really true. And so the family doesn't know that, but they're gonna hold out to the, for that forever because, well, that's our legacy and our land and whatever. There are lots of different reasons. And some of them are not related to, nobody wants to do anything here. They, in fact, may have had offers, but the land was costing too dear for what it would take to bring the structure back or the use back or use another use. Sometimes those things come in. Something else to consider, I guess. But yes, in terms of when the flood thing happened and people had timing issues, then that's not a self-created hardship. They didn't try to be flooded out. But sometimes we have to figure out ways around that. And I think generally, we do figure out how to deal with those kinds of emergency or causal things. My specific discussion was in relationship to what Commissioner Height was talking about in terms of parks and greenways, open space and such. And maybe this is too much of a detail to bring up in terms of a general subdivision, subdivision improvement standard kind of thing. But if you have certain kinds of public designations like for greenways or drainages or such like, and the city says, this is what you need to put in place for us by a certain date as you're doing your development or after you've built this many houses and have this much in the ground before you get another building certification or CD or whatever you get, then you need to finish this and then get it to the city, such as landscaping a parcel of land for use by the public, creating a trail at, adjacent to your own development for the use of the public to connect to public sidewalks or other trail things. My concern is that if you also have privately owned land that is supposed to be connected with such greenways and resemble them, that there ought to be some way of creating a standard that says that all these contiguous kinds of developmental, open space, greenways, whatever, and parks and whatever, should be done at approximately the same time, rather than having them years and years apart, because first of all, it doesn't look like it's one in the same. And the other part is that sometimes the developers run out of money. And if you don't get those kinds of contiguous things done up front or more towards the middle of developments, they simply don't get done in the same way. There's a quality control aspect that I don't think we actually recognize, and I don't know how to build that in, but it's something to think about.
Commissioner Teslov.
Along those lines of all the improvements at one time, this is more of a question for staff. I'm assuming we require bonding of some sort for this open space. Do we require bonding for the whole subdivision so that if they were to go out, then the city would then have the money to come in and finish the project?
Yeah, with a subdivision approval or sometimes with site plan approval that requires either common open space or common area improvements or public improvements, there's financial security that's required. And the, and the percentages vary in whether or not it's a, a system-wide improvement versus a, basically a local street or local improvement. But the common area improvements are also secured.
Any further discussion about this particular document? Commissioner Fleg.
And how often does the city then take the bond and apply it and do the work themselves, rather than waiting for the developer to finish it up?
You know, that's been fairly rare. We've had a couple of instances where a developer has gone bankrupt or the development company has gone bankrupt, where we've had to finish out improvements and put a lien on properties to recoup some of the costs that we incurred, but it's been fairly rare.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking about the development we looked at, that is south of where the, the college is located, along Hoover and.
Hoover and Pike.
Pike, yes.
Hoover and Pike.
Exactly. And we're going to, we're going to require of that development to have an area that is landscaped. It's going to still be owned by them, they're going to have to maintain it, but they're also gonna have to landscape it. And so my concern would be, even though you can get bonding for that, the timing of when that gets done is, I think, important because it should be done at a time when you're putting in the adjacent public improvements, because it simply makes sense that then the quality is still going to be there because that's part of, of what the builder, the developer is going to want people to see, is this contiguous lovely-looking or appropriate-looking landscaping. And without a timing factor, regardless of bonding, I think you miss the opportunity to get it done right.
So before we move on, just wanted to get some clarification from the commission if there is interest in the notion about the matter of discontinuation of a nonconforming use, whether there, I mean, I guess in addition to perhaps an appeal process, whether, similar to the discussion we had about damage and reconstruction, whether we would have, allow an extension for unavoidable circumstances or re-establishment of a nonconforming use. But I don't know, we'd have to set up some criteria that makes sense, especially with that, but.
Right.
I didn't get a good sense of where kind of the, most of the commission was on that topic.
Okay. So let's try to give Brian some feedback on that. I mean, we can go one by one. Let's start with Commissioner Teslov.
Let me put on the spot, I guess. I guess I'm in favor of leaving it as it is. I've seen it even much more strict than we have it in some communities. Like was mentioned, really nonconforming uses, it's been put in place to phase out uses that are, may not be desirable in a neighborhood as it grows out, knowing that stuff does change over time. And so personally, I'm in, I'm in favor of just leaving it as it is. We could extend the time, we could shorten the time. Inevitably, there's always gonna be an instance where it's too short or too long. And so unless there's concrete data that says we should go either way, I'm fine with leaving it how it is.
Commissioner Fleg.
My thought would be is to build in a standard, generally phase it out as needed, but to have something in there in case of an environmental disaster of some variety, because we all know of the situation after the flood here in Longmont in certain areas, that, that needs to be taken into consideration in some way.
Commissioner Goldberg.
I'm sorry, I thought, perhaps I'm revealing a weakness here, but I thought nonconforming situations have a clause in, in case of like natural disaster. Isn't that the case? I feel like we had a, maybe it was a previous commissioner who mentioned where we were discussing also in the kind of historic east side, kinda Kimbark area, if, if there's a fire or if there's a natural disaster, aren't nonconforming situations kinda removed in the case of disaster?
So we have a provision on the top of, and this applies to both nonconforming uses as well as nonconforming structures. It's on page 73, both F2, I'll take care of that typo, remove the three, as well as B2 under nonconforming structures, that if it is damaged, destroyed by unavoidable means, that there's a certain period of time that it, that it could be re-established.
And then, Brian, would you just remind me, what, what would be the risk? And I heard Don mentioning, you know, the impact of the market and, and that role, but what is the risk that we run by extending that from 180 to 365 days?
I mean, the only risk is that there's a longer period of time for that to be re-established. If that's a, a nonconforming use, the West Side Tavern aside, if there's a nonconforming use that has impacts on the neighborhood and there's concerns about that being re-established, it gives there additional time for that to be re-established.
Unless I hear other more compelling argument from the rest of the commission, then I'm supportive of 180 days.
I'm gonna speak last. Commissioner Pullen.
I'm in favor of keeping it the way that it is as of right now. So I'm in agreement, 180 days, sounds good to me.
Commissioner Teta.
I like the idea of having an appeal process or a way to revert it to its nonconforming use if there were extenuating circumstances even beyond natural disaster. Or in conjunction with that perhaps, like Chairman Sharnack suggested, that we make a bigger deal out of it when we decide to make it nonconforming. I think the, the issue for me is that the decision about making it nonconforming doesn't tend to be one that we or council has much to do with. I think it's a staff decision typically. And even though they, they have the best intentions and the, the vision for the future of Longmont in mind, those decisions don't always work hand-in-hand with the market.
Commissioner Height, thoughts?
I think for, and I don't know that the existing nonconforming chapters are as comprehensive as what I'm reading now, and that just could be because I haven't read them before, but that's, it's, it's a pretty all-inclusive nonconforming, science on conforming fences and landscape buffers, et cetera. But back to the question, a nonconforming use that's not being used for six months should probably die.
And my two cents is more along the lines with Commissioner Teta. It does appear, I mean, I, I would like to see some ability to, to take into consideration that, that a longstanding nonconforming use might actually not deserve to die. But it appears that, as far as I can tell, that Commissioner Teta and I are in the minority. Anything else you wanted us to look at on this particular document? Okay. Anybody itching for a break? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back from our break, so we'll get started again. So unless somebody wants to correct me, I believe we are done with document two, and we'll move on to document three, which is historic preservation. And, let's see. Commissioner Flay, go ahead.
We were given this document two, and as I recall, early on when we were talking about the different zone districts and overlay districts and such like, that there was a discussion of discontinuing things, and my fond discontinuance would have been the extra landscaping buffer required for entrances into the city that we always waived, but, I just had to get that in there, because, you know, we always waive it, but we always still have it on the books, which seems kind of bizarre to me, because as my understanding, and perhaps I'm in error, that the conservation overlay district was one of those things that since we've never used it, it doesn't make sense to retain it. Is that a correct statement, or?
Well, that, you know, that was the, that was the original draft of the zoning districts, based on our original staff discussion with our code consultant, was that, it was put in place in 2001 as a potential tool for older neighborhoods to utilize, to kind of protect that historic fabric of their neighborhoods. Since 2001, nobody's come forward to utilize it. We've heard comments that the, potentially the threshold for having a conservation overlay district may be too rigorous, but there has been interest in that. We did mention, some of the neighbors from the historic east side neighborhood presented some comments to council recently, earlier this month, you know, expressing an interest in the conservation overlay district. You know, if there is, and we've also heard from neighbors along Kimbark Street in the downtown area, in particular, I think the 700 block, that have expressed an interest in potentially utilizing the conservation overlay district. Not necessarily a historic district, wouldn't go to that level of preservation or rigor in terms of review criteria and analysis or review by the Historic Preservation Commission, but it would be a zoning tool, again, for some of those established older neighborhoods to have some contextual standards that they feel would be helpful to protect development in their neighborhood. So we're not adverse to reconsidering the conservation overlay as a tool for a neighborhood to utilize that.
Is it, is it also a possibility that rather than retain the whole thing, that the document be sifted through to see which parts of it could be melded into what we already have going forward as a standard? Does that make any kind of sense?
That's, that's another option, would be to have standards that would apply to, like I said, older neighborhoods, that in terms of compatible design, that if they're trying to preserve some of the older structures, historic structures, not necessarily historic landmarks, but older buildings and homes in their neighborhood, that that could be a tool to be utilized as well. The conservation overlay district, as it's currently in our, in our code, would allow a neighborhood, if they were so inclined, in addition to the standards that are currently in place, if it were put in place in their neighborhood through a zone change, that they could develop their own design standards or criteria for redevelopment in their community or in their neighborhood.
So Brian, you just made me think of a question about something like a conservation overlay, and I haven't read this thoroughly and I haven't had time to absorb it since it was passed out to the DIAS, but it doesn't look as though it overtly says that it only applies to historical buildings or historical neighborhoods. I mean, that a conservation overlay could, it says to retain the character of earlier periods of development, but 1970 is old enough, right? I mean, it's 50 years ago.
It wouldn't apply to just historic buildings or neighborhoods. I mean, and upon the criteria here.
So, so it's not just about historic conservation? Somebody could interpret this to be...
No, no. It's, it's not regarding historic conservation, it's regarding retaining kind of that, that may have utilized historic too much in my, in my comments, but it's kind of, the intent is to retain kind of the existing fabric of that neighborhood, to the extent that's, that the neighborhood would like to see retained.
Okay.
Whether that's architectural form or massing or whatever that might be.
Okay. So don't think of conservation overlays as just only historical then?
No.
Okay, all right. So I'm also curious, because I noticed, and you are the planning staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Board, correct?
I used to be.
Oh, you used to be, okay.
Yeah, Karen Bryant has taken over that role.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. But you have a lot of expertise in it.
Yes, I've done it before, so.
All right, okay. So maybe you can explain to me why the language in the document in front of, not, not the documents that Mr. McLaughlin handed out, but the document we're reviewing, your document, why does it only refer to exteriors? There is no reference to preserving the interior of historically important buildings. Is that a legal requirement that's coming out of, like, I noticed there was reference to the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines? Is it coming from the federal level? Is it just a standard of practice?
It's, it's our local ordinance regarding historic preservation. Most communities don't regulate interior modifications, but there are, I mean, there are a few that make, you know, that do have that requirement, but for the most part, it's mostly about exterior modifications to maintain kind of that historic feel and character in a, in a district or to a historic landmark. The intent is not to allow, not to prevent, I should say, not to prevent a homeowner from modernizing their home, I mean, if they have rooms that are too small for their needs or they need to upgrade their kitchen or whatever they need to do to kind of meet a, you know, contemporary family's needs, you know, I think the intent was not to preclude that from happening. There are circumstances where if someone who owns a historic landmark or a contributing, property that's considered contributing in a historic district, wants to request, for example, financial incentives associated with preservation, such as a state income tax credit, that that financial incentive, the modifications would apply to both exterior and interior modifications.
Okay. See, because the reason I bring this up is because very often in some of the really tragic examples of buildings we've lost, like Penn Station in New York City, you know, that's a tried and true example, right? You always see the pictures of the interior. It's the interior that, that mattered. Another, another example of where we've preserved the exterior, but we allowed the interiors to be gutted, and so these are not really, these buildings are no longer really functioning the way that they historically did, is up in the gambling districts, in Black Hawk and Kerbal Creek and Central City. I mean, so from, this, this is where I think historical preservation that focuses only on the exterior enters into kind of a deeply flawed area, just in terms of concept and theory. You, you end up creating, not to sound too mean about it, but rather a disnified exterior image of historicity, like, oh, look, these are, are historical buildings because they have the look. But my own house over in, in, I'm not in the historic district on the west side, but I'm in Old Town. The really important thing about my house is the flagstone floor in the basement. That's the important part of it, because that's so unusual and, and just not, not found. So governing or controlling only the exterior, yeah, somebody could buy my house, tear out that, that beautiful flagstone floor in the basement, get rid of all that history that exists on the interior, and, but, you know, because there's knee braces on the outside? Hey, fine, it's craftsman style. Great, good to go. But that's really just window dressing for, it's, it's not truly preserving the history of it. And we, we see a lot of houses where, where people are tearing out the interior and, as you say, modernizing, but, so what's really historic about that building anymore? Now, I'm not saying, like, force the people to stick to knob and tube wiring, you know?
Right.
But, you know, that's also a matter of safety, too. But there's, I struggle with, with, with the emphasis only on the outside, because what I come up with is basically people trying to get the city to become their HOA. And I don't think the city should be in the business of being an HOA. And, and for example, on page six of our, of what we're looking at, you know, paragraph D at the very bottom about design guidelines, I mean, you know, we, we talked about this at our last meeting. I know that I perhaps upset some people in the audience by saying that, that, you know, having a design review board is, I'm not in favor of, because it can be used in all the bad ways that HOAs can get used, to pit neighbor against neighbor. So I'm skeptical about design guidelines as well, because to me it seems to be, I mean, there needs to be someplace in the city where people can go, where they can live without an HOA, without being told, you can't use that color, you can't, you can't, you know, mix those styles, you, you must stick to that style. If you are going to scrape and rebuild, it has to look like this. There has to be someplace left in the city where there's still some of that flexibility. So I'm, I'm concerned about those bigger, broader, kind of theoretical issues of historic preservation, when it goes awry, when it runs off the rails. Okay.
Well, just... Well, just a side note.
Yeah.
So in terms of the design guidelines, we currently, in the City of Longmont, do not have any local historic districts. And so there are not any historic districts that are subject to design guidelines. We have three national register historic districts. One on the east side, one on the west side, and one recently in the downtown. So, but those are more districts associated with recognition, and there's also some financial incentives associated with those as well. But today, we do not have any local districts.
Okay. Commissioner Poland.
So, getting back to the, to documents that Mr. McLaughlin has given us. Document one, which is 1504020, and then the document two, which is 1503. He made reference to the fact that, basically, 1503, one is not necessary, because before we had RLE and RMD. I'm just wondering, can you concur with the fact that we have basically used the RLE and RMD districts? And that basically was what, why we didn't use the CO conservation overlay? I mean, is that a, a kind of a true statement that we have made the RLE or the RMD districts, and that's why we didn't use the CO overlay?
That may have been, you know, one reason why those particular neighborhoods that were zoned RLE and RMD, perhaps they felt the need, that they didn't need to have a conservation overlay district if they had these other standards in place. So, so you're right, that, that potentially could have been a reason why the conservation overlay district may not have been used over the past 17 years.
Okay, well, then in that case, you know, I'd be for, as was mentioned by Mr. McLaughlin, just having another tool in the toolbox. I can see, since it looks like we have used RLE and RMD before, and if those are going to go away, I guess we need something to kind of protect those districts, and I guess the conservation overlay would do that. So, I guess I would be in favor of keeping that overlay district in the, in the books, just as another tool, just in case we need it.
Commissioner Flage.
I guess I'm, I, I, as I've heard the forward, the discussion going on here, we don't tend, in this country, to effectively reuse existing structures. We do a lot of tearing down and rebuilding. And when you respect a historic structure, even if you gut it out and reassemble the rooms inside a different way, you're still actually reusing some part of it. You're not scraping and starting from scratch. Yes, there are buildings that probably should have aluminum wiring replaced. And probably you need to have plumbing redone upon occasion. And there are lots of different things that need to be upgraded. But I think that we need, we're far distance away from respecting all structures that are built. And although arguments can be made that some of the more recent structures are not very well made, some of the older ones are not either, interiorly, but externally, they might be better. So, to me, there is an argument to be made for maintaining a historic feel to an area without creating some kind of an amusement park atmosphere with it. So, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see us somehow continue, again, you know, areas of change and areas of stability. We've sort of, it seems like, areas where there are more historic structures, we've sort of stabilized at this point. I'd hate to have a new code come in and cause a destabilization. That, to me, wouldn't make a great deal of sense if we're respecting built environments. There was a reason why people liked living there, and, and there should be a variety of housing. I think that's also envisioned, Longmont. Is that we need to have a variety of different living spaces, places where you feel comfortable tearing it all down and starting over. But places also, and that allow that. But also places that maintain the historic feel that's been there for decades, and maybe 100 years, maybe longer. And people enjoy that environment, and it would be a shame not to still promote that and have that available. It's part of what is historic about Longmont. It gives us a sense of place. So, one of those things that we need to figure out how to do is if you're taking the zone district away that worked in that area, find something that works to reapply from the get-go when the new zoning code comes out. Because you leave something unprotected, then it goes away pretty fast.
Commissioner Teta.
So I like a lot of what Commissioner Flage had to say about that. Let me make sure I understand what we're, we're trying to discuss here. We're trying to keep the, the option of a conservation overlay available. And would it be then at the request of the neighborhood? And it would undergo some kind of a review process by staff? Or by, I'm just trying not...
To establish GLA?
Exactly. So it's, it's a self-initiated process, though, by the, by the neighborhood?
Right.
I got it.
So Brian, given what you just said, and taking a little longer to look at the document that Mr. McLaughlin gave us, I think we, I, I personally wouldn't want to see this implemented the way it's currently written. Because it does constrain the criteria in paragraph B, number two, that the structures are more than 50 years old. It's conceivable that, that a neighborhood that has structures that are primarily less than 50 years old would want to have a conservation overlay. I mean, you know, maybe, oh, what's the name? Down South, Prospect. Maybe Prospect would want a conservation overlay. You know, but they're all brand new. Or relatively new. So, I agree with Commissioner Poland, having another tool in our toolbox. You know, if, if this is going through a review process, and goes through, you know, a zoning change, and, and it looks like, you know, more than 50% of the, the owners have to agree. I mean, there, there's some pretty good criteria that have to, some hurdles that have to get jumped to put in a, an overlay district. I don't see any harm in us having the tool to use for the future, if we want to. More discussion? Commissioner Poland.
Yeah, I would just agree with Chairman Chernick, though, that maybe we can get rid of item two on that. You know, I agree that, you know, Prospect would be something where it's, they're, they're not 50 years old, but yeah, they would qualify for it, so. And I don't know if we can set a minimum age. You know, I don't know. So, I would rather just not even worry about the age. The other, I think the other requirements do kind of give you enough specifications to meet.
Any other comments, discussion? Helpful notes for Brian? Diatribes, like I tend to do? Commissioner Poland.
Yeah, I'll just say, though, that Document Three, the Historic Preservation, I'm in agreement with how that's written. I guess we could go into some more weeds with some stuff, but I think in general, I, I prefer not to get into the weeds. I think the way that is written, what's included in there, will suffice with the needs for the city.
Anybody else? So Brian, do you have what you need?
Man, I turned it off, sorry. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time this evening. As I mentioned before, kind of the next step is to take all the feedback that we've received on all the chapters, and work with our code consultant to create a consolidated draft that will be available to the public in early April. And then we are planning a public forum, open house, I think the second week of April, and then coming back to the commission. And at the time we make it available to the public, the document, the consolidated document, we'll certainly forward that on to the commission and the council, so that they're aware and stick and start looking at that as well at your leisure. So, we'll be back to the commission with code topics, I believe on April 25th is the planned date, so.
Great, thank you, Brian. Thank you so much for all your work on this and guiding us through it. It's a huge project. We have on our agenda next, a final call for public invited to be heard. The only member of the public is Mr. McLaughlin. Would you like to come forward and make more comments?
No, thank you, but I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, sir. We'll close the public invited to be heard. Any items from the commission? I have one item, which is, I'm going to go to the RMLUI conference next week, thanks to the city. Thank you very much for, for helping fund that, Don. Who else is going? Commissioner Flage? Anybody else? Okay, we will see you there. It's going to be a fun time. All right. Any items from Council Representative Rodriguez?
I just want to say that it's always a pleasure listening to the various comments and points of view as they're, as we're going through these massive documents. And I'll do my best to accurately convey your comments, questions, and concerns to my fellow council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Items from Planning Manager Don Burchett? None? Okay. Last item is adjournment, unless somebody is opposed, we will be adjourned. Thank you.